Good evening, everybody. We'll get started at six o'clock according to my phone. Councilmember Ray, would you like us please?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you once again for bringing us together, putting your arms around us, blessing our homes and our families. Give us worship and knowledge to run the city of Jacksonville and this residence. In the name of Jesus, we ask, pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I'm going with the pledge.
Pledge and swear to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Good evening. Welcome to the May twenty-second meeting of Jacksonville City Council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deetz.
Here.
Rupel.
Here.
McCleary, McCoy.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
LeBron.
Yes.
Moss. Twitty.
Here.
Kenman.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one answer, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We will proceed. Before you, you have the minutes from our May first meeting. Be familiarizing yourself with those for our next meeting, but at this time entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the April seventeenth meeting. Motion and second, all in favor of adopting those minutes, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. Thank you. You've got your consent agenda. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented to you. Hold on, question before the full motion. Yes, ma'am.
I think there may be a discrepancy if we look on page thirty-five or twenty, whichever one is on the investments where the banks are listed. Unless something has changed majorly there. Yep, here on Investment City of Jacksonville, the banks listed at the bottom. It looks like First Arkansas and Bank of Ozarks numbers might be flipped.
Which page are you on?
I'm looking at page, it's Investments, it's page thirty-five. Bottom right. So if you look back at February and March, you'll see those numbers are actually flipped opposite. Can we have them all? Sure. And we've made a.
Twenty-three and nineteen is flipped, is that?
Yes.
Well, it's not nineteen, it's just a, it's not nineteen.
I might be, but my Excel may not be.
It's our Excel spreadsheet.
So what are we, what are we seeing here now?
I would have to go back and re-evaluate it. I can't confirm that just standing here.
Okay. So you're saying, now which one?
If you calculate up the wastewater bond funds, Bank of Ozarks, one, two, three, four, five, those five totals that's listed there in the investment value, total out to the one million nine hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. If you calculate the rest out, that's where the twenty-three million, those are all First Arkansas Bank and Trust. That's twenty-three million three hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. So it's just flipped.
Yeah.
I would say that it could be, that you could be correct, but I can't confirm that those numbers are exact without going back and refiguring it myself. But I will say that it would appear that it is blocked, yes.
With that being noted, for correction there, the reversal of those figures, entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed by nay? All right, moving on, Street Department with the request to accept the bid for the twenty-five asphalt overlay program. Adam, you want to come up, please, sir?
I'm gonna vote that you fix my street.
Yeah, I knew that was coming. So, yeah, you have the bid tab and recommendations to accept a low bidder, CK Asphalt, for our twenty-twenty-five overlay program. I've given you some supplemental information there, a map showing the streets that we had allocated for this year's program. And then I gave you an anticipated adjustment. These overlay programs, we bid them out and then we have a mechanism in there to adjust the quantities to match the budget, basically. So you're awarding based on the bid contract, but the anticipated adjustment that I've shown there pulls it down. What we anticipate actually expenditures was four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine sixty-three-two. But I can't officially make a change order or anything like that until we award the contract.
Any questions about the bids for the overlay?
Ma'am, this may be a little bit different, but on North Elm, they're doing, they're doing some street.
Yes.
Would this get into that or is that just something totally different?
So, yeah, so North Elm, what's going on is the gas company. The gas company is replacing, doing a big infrastructure upgrade. So they're having to, they're having to cut in, cut our streets and put new gas lines and services in. And unfortunately, that's street cut after street cut. So I met with them about three weeks ago because some of their repairs were substandards and it kind of got rough. So if you notice after that, they've kind of smoothed it out a little bit. So I work with some a little bit and, you know, they've got a lot to do in that area. That area, well, there's a lot of areas in Jacksonville with improvements. And so we will look at that, you know, when they get through for possibly a thin overlay or something like that in the next budget cycle. Just, I won't go into too deep on this because I'll save this for a different time. So something I didn't have at my disposal when we put these asphalt bids out, I kind of reached out to y'all. So since then, we've actually had a company come in and do an evaluation on the streets. So they've scanned all our streets and gave me a conditions index. This is a little snapshot, you know, it's nice color-coded, yellow-green, lot of yellow and red on there. But this is tied to a spreadsheet with all this data and actually the scan. So it's a real neat three-piece program that I can click on a street, have the conditions, and literally see the driving. And in doing so, they've not only tagged the conditions, but they've also tagged every single pothole, every surface cracking. There's a lot, I've got a lot of data now to start looking our next year and try to put together like a five-year overlay program. So that'll be something we'll look forward to, that I'll present to you in a report format sometime down the road. But in the meantime, we're gonna get this year's program rolling and get done what little bit we can.
With that said, I'll save my question for next.
Okay. Good deal. I'm glad I was able to put you off.
Thank you.
So move a little bit. I want, I want, Randy, one second.
Adam, I know we've already briefly spoke about this one, but in looking at this handout you provided today.
Yes, ma'am.
That amount, that total at the bottom is lower than the one on their bid over here. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, yes. Well, I mean, that's my anticipated adjustments. So in the original bid, we bid some, a couple of alternatives to look at this year. I had a couple of seal treatments that I wanted to get prices on. One of them was just a simple seal over the road, kind of a crack seal. Another one, what was it called, a cape seal, which is kind of a chip and seal, a wear course. But when we got the bids on that, it was not, there was not really any savings. It was almost the same price as an overlay. Also, we had, I had put the community center in the bid, just to, in these bids, you want to make sure you at least get your money allocated, that you got budgeted. Community Center is actually a Kevin House budget item. I told him I was gonna throw it in there. He said, I don't have any budget money. I said, let me put it in there, see where it comes in, and if we need, if we have extra, we'll look at it. So in this, my anticipated adjustments, the community center is pulled out. So that's, that in itself is almost an eighty-four thousand dollar deduct that then I can turn around and take the seal treatments, convert those to overlays, full overlays, and basically adjust the numbers to meet our budget. We had four hundred and seventy-five thousand allocated to asphalt overlay. Some of that's already encumbered and we've used. So I was shooting for around the four hundred and fifty thousand and that's kind of what I've got these adjusted to and still gets all the streets that I had planned.
Thanks, Adam.
Sure.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Adam, for education purposes, are these streets just heavily used? Is it floodwater? Is it old? What?
Old. I mean, I don't know that any of them, that there's any reason for any others. I mean, there's some downtown streets or South Road. There's Cypress, that's out near the neck of the woods. That one, I think it probably doesn't have a really good subgrade. That one is, that's the one definitive one I can probably say. It's got very shallow grade and it's not very, there is a lot of subsurface water there. The rest of them, I think, it's just, it's just old this time. Sure.
Randy, you just want to make it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Do we accept a little bit?
All right, and we have motions here. Second, Councilmember McCoy, all in favor of accepting the low bid as presented from Adam's bids, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed by nay? All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, Adam. Next, moving along, ordinance seventeen eighty-seven, reclassifying six twenty-four South Spring Street from R one to R three. Entertain a motion to place ordinance seventeen eighty-seven on first reading. With motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deetz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary. McCoy.
Aye.
Ray. LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Moss. I'm sorry. Mims. I was close, it was Mims.
Before I read this ordinance, just wanted to point out, yeah, sorry. Before I read the ordinance, wanted to point out the title, the subject says that it's declaring an emergency. There is no emergency clause, so if this is approved, I will provide Susan an updated ordinance without that language. Ordinance seventeen eighty-seven, an ordinance reclassifying property in the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, amending ordinance numbers two thirteen and two thirty-eight and the land use map of the city of Arkansas-Jacksonville and for other purposes.
All right. Any discussion of questions on the rezon? If not, entertain a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-seven on first reading, suspend the rules in place on second reading. Motion and multiple seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deetz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims. Aye.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-seven on second reading and suspend the rules in place on third and final reading. Motion and second, Councilmember McCleary, roll call.
Councilmember Deetz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary. McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty. Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-seven on this date.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Councilmember Deetz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Seventeen eighty-seven is enacted. Ordinance seventeen eighty-eight, regulating fencing within the city. Entertain a motion to place seventeen eighty-eight on first reading. We have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deetz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty. Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
Ordinance number seventeen eighty-eight, an ordinance regulating the installation and maintenance of fencing within the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, creating Jacksonville municipal codes eight-five-eleven, eight-five-thirty-five through eight-five-fifty, and amending Jacksonville municipal codes eight-five-eleven, eight-five-twenty, eight-five-thirty, and eighteen thirty, thirty-two-forty, and for other purposes.
All right. Any discussion, questions on ordinance seventeen eighty-eight?
If you'd like to have Adam come on up.
Sure.
Let me just give you a rundown. Okay. I'll give you some highlights of the ordinance. So this is something Councilmember, Ms. Twitty has been working on with myself and Stephanie for a little bit, as well as other council members. Just to give you some background, we currently really don't have any process to regulate fences. Our code has a few regulations in it, but there is no permitting process, so it's difficult to regulate when you don't have a permitting process. So that was, that's kind of the issue one. And then issue two, we've kind of noted some issues that came up over time. Gated driveways, front yard fences, blocking views, things like that. So this is kind of a combination of of things, of notes that we have taken over time and tried to put in ordinance form. Be glad to hit the highlights, you know, one, establishing a permitting function. And I'll note that this is for residential only, so we are still in the works for commercial and industrial or non-residential areas, but it's a little bit more complex, so we kind of wanted to keep this residential stuff separate. So this unifies everything. It addresses front yard fencing, can only be four foot high and more ornamental than anything. It sets the fence height at six foot for rear and side yards. It restricts gates across driveways. It notes that there could be additional restrictions due to covenants, bills of assurance, utility service agreements, things of that nature. So, you know, that would, this sets the minimum standards. There could be additional standards placed by those types of agreements. It addresses fencing over and across easements, providing access. It sets location requirements. I'd say either if it's not immediately adjacent to a boundary line, it's got to be set back far enough where it can be maintained. We ran into that issues in subdivisions where they set the fence back, didn't give themselves any access to the, and then they expect the city to maintain it. We don't do that. Fences can't impede the flow of water. They can't interfere with our normal collection of garbage, yard waste, or bulky items. And I think I've incorporated the references that I found in here that refers to other codes. So I think it's a good start to our residential fencing code, and at least we have a permitting process in place now so we can have a little bit more control moving forward. But be glad to answer any questions. Sure.
So Adam, maybe someone that needs a fence would just, what's their start process? What would that?
So they, it specifies that they got to provide the plans and specifications to our office, just like they'd apply for a building permit, and they'd come to our office to apply for a permit. So they'd have to show us some kind of a plan of the location, of the type of materials where it's located, so we could review it, make sure it complies with this. Ten dollar fee. If it's reviewed in conjunction with a building permit fee, other features, the fees waived, the fee's essentially included in the building permit fee. So it's fairly benign process. It's not a, it's not a process that's gonna, you know. As a matter of fact, a lot of people, most people, will come in and say, I need to pull a fence permit, and we say, we don't have one. So we get that all the time. And that's, you know, I cringe when I want to say that, like, but we want to look, we want to look at what you're going, but we just don't have it. We just, it's never been a mechanism. Absolutely.
There may be a question around that gate, if this applies to the gate, just fencing or gate. Do you want to ask that question?
If I can.
Yes.
So if you have an existing gate that's falling apart to your fence, do you have to get a permit to modify or repair the gate?
It says to, if you're doing any, a permit for modifications or new, but I wouldn't consider that a modification because you're not changing the fence. So if you're not changing the character or repair, I'm not really calling that a modification. I'm calling that a repair. Modification would be, I want to shift the fence three foot here, or I want to move the gate from this driveway to this driveway. That's, in my definition, what I'm calling a modification.
Thanks for that verification.
Sure.
Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay, so there's a lot of people now that have an eight-foot privacy fence.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. You know, you can take them down, right?
This has no clause in it to retroactive or anything like that. And I mean, that's, that criteria is a y'all thing? I mean, that's just the, what kind of I got indicated that things should be in there, so y'all see fit to modify that by all means. Yeah.
Super expensive for privacy fences. Another one I is to look at is unacceptable materials included.
I see your name.
Congregated metal and tin. That's the new, that's the new thing. They're putting the metal panels down the side.
Right.
And they're capping them, and they're half the price of wood privacy fences, and they look fine. There's some inflection right now. Can't tell the difference, but with anybody's price, that privacy fence is, and are super expensive.
I was gonna say, I think I can make a distinction there. I think what's envisioned there, and this could be an interpretation thing, yeah, like old tin, rustic, you know. I think anything, it kind of has a qualifying statement there, or, you know, any material not otherwise used by the fence industry. So, I mean, if there's active, the fence industry is actively using this, you know, material, I mean, there's certainly material. PVC panels are real pretty, you know, stuff, so I think, I mean, in that case, I would rule in favor of the fence, and, you know, this is a common practice used. Our prohibited material, you know, that's one thing that we do have now, is prohibited materials, and it's primarily like razor wire and things like that. So there's still the mechanism in there that anybody, you know, if there's any extenuating circumstances, they can come to the Board of Adjustments and plead their case. So if there is, if there is an eight-foot fence, you know, and they say, well, we're on such a steep slope, and, you know, the house above can see in my pool, and, you know, they can argue that case. So you, but it just, the standard is what's said, there's always the mechanism to go, come to the Board of Adjustments to plead extenuating circumstances.
Adam, you spoke of the positives in this ordinance based on your expertise and your profession. What are the negatives in this ordinance?
I say that. Yeah, I say really the only negative, you know, from homeowner's side is, you know, if they don't understand why we're prohibiting front yard fencing and stuff, or why we're limiting to the height we are, I mean, there's a safety aspect. They're going to argue a safety aspect, well, I want a compound. Well, there's also safety from our public safety, you know, officers that need to look in for their safety to get in or to fight a fire or something to that effect. So that's why we really, you know, is what I took to be the purpose of the four-foot ornamental fence in the front yard. I mean, it's still adequate to keep a small dog or small children, you know, from running out in the road, but it doesn't prohibit emergency access or utilities and things of that nature. There are some, you know, this is going to create some non-conforming conditions. I mean, there are some in Jackson Terrace, there are some front yard fences with gates, and sunny side, those will be allowed to remain. If they are ever upgraded or, you know, do enough improvements to trigger being brought up to code, we will address it at the time. Most of them will just have to pull the gate back from their driveway.
So my next question is homeowner, handyman, handywoman, he's got a fence falling apart, they pull their fence out and they're gonna do all the work themselves. That homeowner still has, they're putting the fence the exact same place that the current fence is in. Pull the post up, put new posts in that same hole and everything. Those homeowners would still need to come and provide a plan, pay a permit fee. Obviously, if you can afford to do a fence, the fee in my mind is fine. It's just, I feel like we're jumping through hoops to make our, to. I agree with some of this.
I would still argue, I would still argue that if they're strictly repaired, it's a dilapidated, it's an existing six-foot wood privacy fence, I would say you're repairing the fence. Now, if they're doing the full thing, hey, come in and talk to me and we'll see. Here's what happens most of the time. They come in, I'm doing the exact same thing, and we got out there, you've moved it, now you're going around this, now you've added. When they say that, they're typically not, as long as they'll come talk to me, and we can confirm that they're doing the exact same thing, I will treat it as repairs and not modifications.
My last question is, who is policing this, when? My last question is, who is policing this, when new fences go up, or who, like, somebody spends several thousand dollars on a new fence and maybe they wanted an eight-foot privacy fence? Is, I mean, what's the consequence for a homeowner?
I mean.
Who's maybe not in the know that they have to now get a building permit, potentially?
I mean, you know, ignorance doesn't excuse them, I mean, you know, we, there's accessory buildings that get placed all the time without, you know, without pulling permits. I mean, we only, we can only do what we can do. I mean, typically, in the past, when we found a non-conforming condition, and, you know, they're, say they're coming in for another reason, they mentioned something, we don't have a, that wasn't on your last building permit. We try to work with them, hey, apply for it, let's get it in the books, make it legal, we'll check it. I mean, we've had some of the, that's why we've caught some of the rezones or the multi-use tenants and things like that. So we would do the same thing here. I mean, we're not gonna go actively drive around and look for problems. Now, code enforcement, you know, if you make your neighbors mad, that's where code enforcement would come in, so.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-eight on first reading and suspend the rules in place on second. We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
No.
McCleary. McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman. Mims.
Aye.
Alright, entertain a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-eight on second reading and suspend the rules in place on third and final reading. We have a motion and second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
No.
McCleary. McCoy. Ray.
No. Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty. Kenman. Mims.
Aye.
Alright, entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-eight on this date, motion.
Second.
And multiple seconds, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
No.
McCleary. McCoy. Ray. LeBron.
Aye.
Twitty. Kenman. Mims.
Aye.
Alright, ordinance seventeen eighty-eight is enacted on this date. Any, yes, Adam, thank you very much for that. Any new business? Any announcements?
Yeah, something, just wanna give a quick praise report to, we'll first start off, and just anyone here tonight, or anyone listening. We've had several house fires in Ward One Stonewall neighborhood, we had one in the Foxville neighborhood back in December. And most of these fires are because of the chimney, and for some reason, these last folks, I thought it was a somewhat warmer night, but unfortunately, I was told that it did start the chimney. So I just wanna encourage everyone, if for any reason you're using your fireplace, just please have it cleaned. You know, these homes are thirty, forty years old, and we've lost, I mean, we've lost lives, houses are gonna be completely demolished, and so just wanna be, everyone to be aware of that. Secondly, we also had an incident, a lightning struck one of our cable, Comcast cable posts in the back easement, and it actually set the wire on fire and ran it all the way to the house, and I think it was raining that night, and fortunately, it was raining, it put the fire out. That home was vacant, and I was, I was out of town that weekend, but got a call and ended up meeting the fire, or I'm sorry, the Fire Marshal, Mike Williams out there. Kudos to Fire Marshal Williams. He was very knowledgeable about what was going on, walked me through some things, and that house was vacant, and he said that house should've burnt down to the ground. And that was just, that would've been just a freak accident. So I just wanna encourage everyone who's, if we're using fireplaces for any reason, just please make sure that they're cleaned and to be safe, because we just, we can't afford any more lives or houses gone down, so just wanna put that out there. And thank you again to your staff, they were, this is the first time I had the pleasure of meeting with them, and they were phenomenal, very phenomenal, so thank you.
Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, I do want to take a moment to publicly thank the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department. The Health and Wellness Community Event that was held last Saturday was well-attended, and they were there heavy. And even Chief Hibbs came on his day off, so really appreciate you, it was a great event, great turnout, and really appreciate your presence there, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, entertain a motion to return. Alright, we're done, thank you.